Good evening, everyone. This special meeting of the City Council of St. Helens is called to order. Today is August 4, 2025. It is now 6:01 PM. The meeting is being held in person at St. Helens City Hall, and people are also available in person state by Zoom. Deputy City Recorder, please call the roll call and councilors. Please respond if you're participating in person or by Zoom.
Ms. Msie?
Oh, I'm in person here.
Council President Jessica Chilton.
Here in person.
Councilor Mark Gunderson.
Here in person.
Councilor Russell Hubbard.
Here in person.
Councilor Brandon Sundin.
Here in person.
Thank you. Let the record show that the court is present. All right, so there are two items on the special meeting agenda. The first item is to discuss either a charter amendment or a new code requiring voter approval prior to the establishment of any new fees on the utility bill that are unrelated to utility services. The second item is to discuss a sunset provision to the public safety. Before we discuss the special session items, we are going to go into recess into executive session under ORS 1926602H and 1926602F to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties of public body in regard to current litigation or litigation to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report otherwise disclosed news deliberations or anything said about these subjects during executive session, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. The decision may be made in an executive session. At the end of executive session, we will return to open session to discuss the items on the special session agenda and welcome public back into the work. Did you want to give us specific time about that at all to be helpful?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
What, how long do you think reasonably? Because we seem to run short. What do you think is reasonable?
Do you think 30 minutes?
I don't think. Should we say check back at 6:30? Is that reasonable? So 6:30? Okay, so we will check back at 6:30. And also, we have one invigilatory to deal with that is asking to be admitted there. Okay, so we want to go into executive session for that. So you want to adjourn right now?
No, don't adjourn. If is there, so don't go into recess yet. Is there an application pending?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is the person, who is the person? Okay, so this would be an opportunity for the city council to make a determination of whether or not it believes Mr. Preheim is a representative of the news media. I have provided, recently, Mr. Preheim was denied access to attend executive session and submitted a grievance. And I provided a response to that with a legal memorandum that explained why I did not believe that he was a representative of the news media. Have you, are you all familiar with that?
Yes.
I don't have any different recommendations. There's been no information. Has there been any information submitted that's any different?
I have not received anything.
Okay, so it would be my recommendation that he, Mr. Preheim is still not a representative of the media and the city council couldn't vote to make that determination. And I would recommend that you do that in this open session. If that's what you would like to do. So someone could make a motion and the motion would be, I make a motion that Mr. Preheim has determined not to be a representative of the news media. And then someone can second it and then you can vote.
We have discussion as well.
And they could have discussion, yeah.
I'll make a motion to determine that Mr. Preheim is not considered media and not allowed to attend executive session.
If we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, so last time should have been the initial application, meet some bare minimum requirements, correct?
Yes.
Has not changed.
And that has not changed. That's correct.
Okay, so we have a motion second. Any other discussion?
We just say, and that was with the old application, correct? So.
So Mr. Preheim did submit an application under the old policy. The new policy explains in more detail what the Attorney General's guidance provides and provides updated criteria to help evaluate whether a person is a representative of the news media. So in the most recent grievance and response to that grievance, the new media, the new, the city's new media policy was applied. And it was determined that under that new policy, he was not a representative of the news.
The other session. Okay, motion second. Counselor Sundin.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson?
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard?
And I as well.
All right, so we are going into recess for special session. Now maybe we should change that to checking in at 6:40. We'll check in at 6:40. So right now, we'll recess this special session.
It's unofficial.
It's still. All right, so the time now is 6:58. We're coming out of our executive session, coming back into our special session. So we are going to deal with the action items that I had discussed earlier, but they are the discussion on the charter amendment. So the first item to discuss is a possible charter amendment requiring voter approval prior to the establishment of any new fee on utility bill that not related to the utility services. And B, we're going to start with a presentation by the city administrator and the council has to ask questions. And then we'll move on to public comment. Following public comment, council, city council may discuss and deliberate on the items and make the motions desired.
All right, thank you, Erin. If you should be somewhat familiar, we've been talking about it quite a bit lately. At your Lysextinth meeting, you, Msie introduced a session topic to introduce this concept of having voter approved requirements for new or something that came up in the budget committee process. It was also unanimously voted back to and talk about this. In order to refer a measure to the ballot, have some direction that by August 5th, we're going to make the November 4 deadline. So in talking about fees, we basically three types of fees. We should be clear about what fees are in and what service fees, there's fees for specific services, and then there's impact. I know a lot of cities themselves, obviously, sees heads of increases. So municipal service fees are revenues from utility customers for citywide services for safety, library, parks. We had a recreation fee for time because so for their on utility related. These were specific services, those that are tied to as we're seeing on our ability bills as far as water sewer and suction based types of the last one, impact fees are those that they associate with elements and systems development charges. So we currently have a public safety fee in chapter 1330. Simple codes adopted by ordinance. On financing was entered into 2021, there's approximately 6 million that service is both the principal and interest. There was some question about that. Partization is about 750,000. He is $10.30 a month for a loan unit. All that revenue goes to if you were repealed, that would be lose that source of revenue that's really significant to social services had obligation to repay this loan. So it would have to come to 750,000 here somewhere.
But we would not be able to get rid of the loan, just for the record. Actually, just clarifying it for like the 100th time.
Process. Or others. I see it as three options. We can do nothing. And go on. Counsel can name an ordinance that would go in our ordinance. Seed with this charter amendment and self impose this on there before another. Next, so could happen. Also, decision to
Is there additional staff? Or is that, was that your?
Need a copy of the resolution in here that
There is a resolution that's drafted that in the event that the city council wanted to go forward and refer a measure to the voters to decide whether to require voter approval of new fees. You could pass that motion. Excuse me, you could pass, make a motion to pass that resolution. And then once you pass that resolution, that gets filed with the city's election officer and the city attorney then drafts a ballot title to get submitted for the November 4 election. Another option, as John was saying, is you could just propose to adopt city code that would require voter approval prior to passing any new fees. That would be something that city council could pass. You wouldn't pass it in today's session because it's not prepared. But that type of ordinance, the city could prepare that ordinance and you could pass it at the next city council meeting. And that would be an ordinance that would have the same effect as a charter amendment. And the difference is, is that city council could amend that in the future. Whereas a charter amendment, you would, the voters would need to amend it. But it does have the same impact. Or as Don said, you could, you could do nothing. And again, any, any new fees could still be discussed the way that you discussed new fees before. I think if there's any questions of John, you could ask that now or any questions of me. And it's open for discussion. Also, you can open it up to public comment and then come back and discuss after.
Sure, I have a question real quick about the difference between the ordinance and the resolution. The ordinance could be passed faster than a resolution, right? It takes longer. Isn't that another benefit of using ordinance?
So the resolution is would refer the measure to the voters and the voters would then have a say about whether or not they want to require voter approval for any new fees. And that would then take effect at the November 4 election.
Okay, so the ordinance would just change our charter restricting us from adding additional fees to the utility bill.
So the ordinance would just would change your city code.
Right.
Not your charter.
Okay.
Because the only way to change a charter is through a vote of the people. So it would change your city code. It would put the same restriction on you so that you could just pass the city code and say voter approval is required for any new fees. And that would have the same impact. It's, it's just easier to modify, but it has the same impact.
And the benefit of that is that we could enforce it quicker. It could be implemented quicker.
It could be implemented quicker. It's effective 30 days from passage. And then there is a restriction on city council that they could not pass any new fees without voter approval. So if the city wanted to pass a new fee next month, it would have to refer that fee to the voters.
Two years, I say in two years, though, whoever's on council at the time could say, we don't agree with that anymore and they could, they could get rid of that fairly easily, correct?
Well, it would be a political discussion. I mean, council would have to discuss it. And yes, then if everyone on council or if that majority on council voted, they could repeal that restriction that was put in place by this council. That's correct. It would, it's a city council action.
Or modify it, some small tweak.
It is true that an ordinance is easier to modify. So if there is some unintended consequence from the ordinance, so it wasn't defining things clearly and maybe there were certain fees that were, it was unclear or those getting swept into the restriction, then you could modify it to make it more easier if it's an ordinance, a code amendment versus a charter amendment. Because if something was, if it was a charter amendment and it was unclear, you'd have to go back to the voters and say
Just change the charter.
To change the charter.
Once a year, remember they'd have a chance to change that.
Our elections officer isn't here today, but I believe there's, there's an election in May. And then under the Secretary of State guidelines, it looked like there was potentially four options a year. But I think generally it's a May election and November election, at least are the most common.
Well, I'm not wild about ending the charter at all. The way it would pass as the ordinance. Just in case something happens.
We could add the, I know one of the questions out there was, or one of the concerns out there was having a sunset to when we would stop the fees. We could add that to an ordinance.
Yes, and that's on the agenda for the next discussion.
Just want to make sure that that is something that we could do with an ordinance if we, if we, and relatively easy.
Well, I think that, you know, the concern that I've heard, I see it both ways. I like the fast tracking of it and that you didn't have done expeditiously by changing the ordinance and making sure that all the actions are in place that call out, you know, the exact purpose, how much the sunset clause in there as well, so people know exactly how much money, how long, and if they get a voice. You know, the only thing that I've, I've heard echoed a lot is the fact that there is a distrust in government currently, right? And the fact that the charter makes that more solidified in the voters' hands. There is the other piece of it, that that's a huge political move. The council has to set up your field ordinance to change or modify the, any type of fee. So there's that aspect of it that is, I mean, that would become a great undertaking, right? They're serious ones. So there's that piece of it.
Yeah, I mean, that makes the ordinance pretty serious. I don't know if we need to take it to the, the level of the resolution.
Question. There, there would be no issue to hypothetically do both, right? So like start out with modifying the ordinance and then like seeing what that generates, right? If people were in support of that, if that, that satisfies people because they are going to get, you know, their voice heard and they're going to choose it. And then we could always change direction if that's really not, you know, that satisfies the citizens. We could use something.
That's my thought is it gives us a few months to test the waters and kind of see, see how it goes before something more final.
Well, and then on top of that, even if we made all of these modifications and we did the resolution and said there's still a chance that, you know, that's going to change with, without our thoughts.
Do we know any status on the citizen petition update? Do we, did we get an update on that? Because I was understanding everything had to be done, signatures validated, everything back to Kathy. In two days.
My, my understanding is, because I think that the, there is some literature out there that's unclear. But my, my understanding is that the city has to receive all of the signatures by August 6th. And then the county has 30 days to verify the signatures. And I know that that's different than in one piece of, one manual, it says something different that all the signatures have to be verified by the 90th day. But I, my understanding is that if the signatures, the quantity of signatures is submitted to the city by 90 days in advance, so that's August 6th, I believe, then the city election official would submit that to the county to start verifying the signatures. And if there are not sufficient signatures verified, it would not be eligible.
So I had a very different conversation with Don in the county election office.
Okay.
So I'll just tell you what he said, and I don't know what's actually true. I was told when I went and had to face the case group that, that the signatures had to come to Kathy. He had to validate that there is this need to qualify, right? And then that's when the 30 day actual start. Then those signatures got tendered over to him, who would then validate all of those signatures, all of those validations and basically a certificate of compliance or whatever you want to call it, then had to be done and brought over here by August 6th. So that was the direct conversation that he had with me.
Okay, so, well, what I would say is that on August 6th, if the signatures are brought in, you know, it sounds it's for the county to determine whether or not, it's for the county to determine whether or not it's eligible.
It would be nice in the future for that, like, I know, because it's been like a circus. I'm trying to get the information out there and what we actually have to have. But we'll have, this is a learning opportunity for the future on what we actually have. Okay, so can we take public, does everybody agree with us to take public comment now and see if there's anything else that's worth simplification? So is there anybody online? Do we have any public comment whatsoever?
There's a, I think the addition of public comment was a little late. You need a little minute.
Okay, Counsel Hubbard, perfect.
You think if
That's the big question, right? In my opinion, is like, the only way to, what's the term, referendum? The only way to combat the, you know, another option for the elimination of the public safety fee would be to counteract that, but we can do that anytime if in fact that was going to go forward, right? Would we still have to take, we can actually put something on sooner at a later date, so we're not having to go through the same process with
Especially because we already have the resolution drawn up.
So we could put a counter argument or another option on the ballot, right?
Yes, at any time the city can refer a measure to the voters at any time during a citywide election. So if the city wanted to move forward with an ordinance, it could do so and pass an ordinance that says voter approval is required for any fees on the utility bill unrelated to utility services. It can just do that. And then in this bay, if it decides that that wasn't sufficient and people say, well, we really want to have it be a charter amendment, you can move forward there.
I meant like for if the fact that if there was enough signatures and there was going to be something on the ballot this November from the citizen petition, are we going to lose an opportunity to get something on the ballot?
So, okay, so the, no, potentially not. The process is if if a petition is submitted on August 6th, it goes to the, well, if it goes, if it's eligible to be put on, based on what the county says. Or either way, the city then at its next regular session meeting has a city council meeting to review the citizen petition. And the city can decide either to accept the citizen petition or provide its counter petition. So at that time, you could propose this counter measure for the citizens to vote on. Or third, not propose a counter measure, but just let it go to the voters, refer it to the voters.
Okay, thank you.
Make sure we have another opportunity. Yeah, if in fact we needed to, otherwise we would just pass that. And then they'll, they can try again if it's not too far. Public comment, so. So then it comes down to, we need to make a motion on whether or not to do the ordinance, modify the ordinance. Right?
You could make a motion or you could not do anything. If you wanted to move forward with either the resolution or the, or a city ordinance, you could make a motion. Well, if you want to move forward with the ordinance, you could make a motion directing staff to preparing ordinance for the city. It's not prepared today. But they could be prepared for the next city council.
The time limit is August 15th deadline to get on the November.
Right.
That's perfect.
So we're not, we wouldn't be able, well, we wouldn't need to get it on the ballot.
You're just changing the code. So an ordinance doesn't, it's not.
Sometimes it's not of the essence. We're only in a time of the essence situation if we're going to modify that way. The children. Yep. So we need to decide whether we're going to do charter or ordinance.
Well, I'll make a motion. You guys can just decide how you feel about it from there. I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with putting together an ordinance and moving forward with an ordinance.
That has the same elements of the trust as it works with the same provisions, right? As far as the monetary.
Yeah, like, do you can make a motion directing staff to prepare an ordinance to update the city code to request, to require voter approval before any new fees are established or increased on the utility bill unrelated to utility service.
Very long motion stated.
Yeah, you can say it stated. Okay, I'll make a motion. Hold that as stated.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
Sunset.
She, she said that. I think she said that with all those words.
Well, I didn't, because we're going to talk about that next. So you can make a motion on that at the next.
It would be.
I want to be clear that what we're talking about for the ordinance and directing staff, it would still have the element of it has to be used for whatever the purpose was. It has the monetary amount. It can't be modified without a vote and there'd be a sunset clause.
And we wouldn't, it would only apply to new.
Everything that's in here, except for the fact that if the existing, we wanted to modify that, then we would need to, it's like the way the charter is, because we have, it's like specify the maximum amount of a fee of the day, include that expiration date unless reauthorized by the voters. Date the specific purpose for what the revenue is to use. And the one, the current public safety fee, or any existing could be modified without the voter approval at that point. You couldn't change $10.30 to $10.11.
That's right. That make sense?
I'm looking at Russ to see if he's understanding that.
So, okay, let me see if I can re-articulate.
What Msie stated was straightforward or exactly what I'm thinking.
Yeah, it's right here on page, maybe this would be helpful. What page is this? On page, the back of page 10. If, if maybe we looked at this, it would be helpful where it says that 2012, the charter, that the back here, the voter approval required from municipal services fees unrelated to the utility service. This right here is basically the corrupt, so it's a whole thing, right?
Okay, yeah, so how about? I'm going to write this motion and I'm going to just reference exhibit A. And that'll, that could help if that's exhibit A plus the sunset clause. The sunset clause isn't stated there because we're going to discuss it later. But if you
It does, it says the expiration date.
CB.
We added it.
Oh, I thought you were referring to the public safety fees.
I'm sorry about the, the ordinance.
Okay.
The only time that it wouldn't go up for a vote is if in fact we as a council, as one of the councils at the time, wanted to do some fees.
Just what B is.
Yeah. And this is. But it also protects the current fee. From any type of. Pretty much just like the vibe you can maybe like maybe like ten dollars and thirty one cents to come through that. Why do you keep looking at me? Because I feel like I'm not.
You are, I understand.
I feel like I'm like not.
Pressure of it, I'm like, I don't know. Okay, so I got it. I, I understand it. Here's a motion. Okay. Maybe you can read my person. Okay. I'll make a motion. To direct staff to prepare an ordinance to require voter approval for any new fees, increase fees, or change of purpose. On.
Real quick, we had a motion in a second before. Do we need to do anything with that?
Second.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, we did have a second. Oh, yeah, we're going to kill it then.
Okay, so we had a motion in a second. Counselor Sunday.
No.
Counselor Preston.
No.
Counselor Gunnarson. Counselor Hubbard. Thank you, Counselor Sunday. Could you press on track? And I'm a no as well.
I think of.
Purpose.
You want to read it and we'll just say I stated. We're going to prop that. Okay. I'm trying again.
Okay, I'll make a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to require voter approval for any new fees, increase fees, or change of purpose as outlined on item number three. Exhibit A of the. Council agenda.
Second thought.
Okay. We have a. Motion in a second. Any additional conversation?
You know, this is a good place to start, whether it's, it's enough, I think is to be determined, but I think it's a good starting point.
I'm where. They just, just do it? Okay, any other comments? Thoughts? With him, Counselor Gunnarson.
I still am like, again, a little bit. Well, I was just going to say that I, I mean, it's either going to be helpful or it's not going to be helpful. I, I. I have never been a fan of adding fees to the utility bill, but with the frozen tax rates that we have, I mean, in the state of Oregon, realistically. I, we have to do what we have to do to provide services and try not, and trying to not make it cost too much and trying to. Provide the services that the people that live in a town of fifteen thousand people expect. You know, when you come to a town like this, you expect twenty-four hour policing, you expect parks to be clean and sanitary and stuff, and those all come with a price.
That's it, pretty well said.
Um, I think that, so I'm still a bit torn on the charter piece. I, I'm hoping that this is going to be enough to show good measure. Um, for citizens, because I think there has been a lack of trust for. Uh, government feels like people are slighted a bit about the police station and, um, you know, not going out for a vote. I also think that maybe some onus is on like us as council in the city on doing a better job communicating. Like, you know, really getting things out there more about like where we are at in the struggles and that type of information. There's so much misinformation out there. It's like. It's kind of dizzying. I think we could do a better job at, at maybe getting more, uh, aggressive on providing information to people. Um. And I also want to make sure that for me, if we're going to go this route with an ordinance, which I think is a good start. That we're prepared to do a referendum on, I think that's the right term, in November, if in fact we, we do have the citizen petition in front of us. So people don't have to be prepared to, you know, go that route if. I think this is a good step. Showing good faith and that we're listening and hearing the voters and the citizens. But if there is a time that we need to, you know, increase or not increase, yeah, increase an existing fee or need to go out for a fee. I hope this goes both ways, right? So that we are then earning the citizen's trust and we're able to reduce information to them to. Help them, you know, support and partner with things we're trying to do with the services that are essentially the stuff that we do, so. So I take off. So we have a motion, we have a second.
Counselor Sunday. Counselor Hubbard. Counselor Gunnarson. And I'm an I as well. All right, so that takes us to our. Um, second item, which is discussion on the sunset of the public safety fee provision. So this is the existing. Um, so possible sunset provision on the public safety fee. We're going to start with a presentation from city administrator, um, and then we can ask questions. Deliberate, if we have any public comment at that time, we can figure it out.
All right, thank you. Most of this should be fairly familiar by now, but. Public safety fee is in chapter thirteen of our municipal code. Adopted the three, the thirty year bond. Start the new police station. One six million. Seven fifty pounds a year.
Hold on, just for the record, you said twenty fifty-two, so that's the expiration date. You said seven hundred and fifty thousand approximately per year, and that is, that is actual interest and principal, correct? For the record, is there committed information out there? Okay.
You have ten dollars and thirty cents per dwelling unit. Some of those. Fees granted, then it's paid for with financing costs. Not going operations. We're going to open this fee as critical because it's been committed to the refund. Wait project. He almost loses that source of revenue though. It would be significant. That's to essential services. Obligation to. Once the debt services paid off. Terminate. Was finding need to be. As I was proposed. Sunset provision. Of the safety fee. Terminate once.
Just to be clear, we're at what, approximately seven percent of our reserves right now, right? Yeah, and twenty percent is how that can like fall as a policy guideline that we have.
Right, spoken.
And just for clarity, how come, how much do we have in this box that is sitting there?
Roughly four point six.
Perfect, thank you.
And then we're opposing, um. Municipal code and submitted that.
Yeah, you have sex, text is divine. And if we're passing the, the ordinance simultaneously, that's going to cover any modifications to this current, uh, thirteen thirty public safety fee. But that will be covered, so it's just literally adding the sunset. For the. Transparency. That services and.
I thought there was a sunset all along, so maybe it just. This is just like making it more structured. I, the way that it was proposed to me all those years ago, there was always a sunset.
Well, it's not in. That's the problem. It's not in there, so nobody actually knows how much money that we actually like. There was John just says, that's twenty, what did you say, twenty fifty-two?
Twenty fifty-two, yeah.
Yeah, that's when, that's when, so that's the date that we should be. Done with. The citizens know.
Again, it's that trust, right? Not trusting.
Yeah, I think it, well, for me personally, I think it adds a level of transparency. Here's the amount that we have. This is the purpose that it's going for. This is how much it is. And then this is when it's in the sunset. They, well, really, I think.
This is even still an if. Because. We have to. Build it, right? So is there still a question about, I mean, can we, can we firmly stand beside this? What if something happens?
Same old words, I'm not, like, I'm not.
I just want to make sure if we're saying that this is the, the end date, if something happens. Is there a chance that this date could be incorrect?
Maybe paid off when the debts experience. Like, if the straight stock is low and the. shave off some. And other, other debts.
But that would just, it's, that would expedite the process.
So that would shorten it. Okay, I just want to make sure there's not any chances of it.
Taking all of them.
That's right of timing and refunding.
I think the thing that will help is once we get, we'll do that in October. That, you know, when we actually start breaking ground and we stop paying the fees and fines that we're going to be building. Um, but I think it's going to help because this is the like epitome of that, one of those hospital scenarios that we could always talk about. I'm very excited, um, to, you know, see a sign out there that says, oh, the, the same old league department and people can actually see some tangible result. Or wherever mine has been going the last three years. Like now there's going to be actually something. There versus just paying at every. Yeah, so I'm really excited about this, and I would be just as excited if it was, we had been charging money for a library or a sports fountain. Or any type of other thing, like it doesn't matter. We've been charging people money. Well, it doesn't specifically purpose. And it, yeah, not being to show a point of this, how that tide is turning in October. I guess this is going to be a huge celebration that we're actually getting this. Across the finish line, like, that would be, that would be great to get at least started. Taking off on. I think track there, but still, so. The whole thing is to add these sunset costs. And I don't know what that looks like, Ashley. Is that, I mean, is it just adding the year twenty fifty-two to it? So. That's when.
Uh, so, uh, I don't know if people can see, I know that council can see a proposed, uh, text for a sunset clause. Um. That's one option, and this is an option that many cities use when they adopt a public safety fee for a specific purpose, then they have a date, um, certain that they know that. Uh, the public safety fee will no longer be charged. Um, there's other ways to do it. You could say until the, the, this particular bond is paid off. Um, that gives. It's less certainty, um, but that's another way you could do it also. Uh, this is just has a certain date, and, and again, this was, uh, the bond financing was a, is a thirty year bond financing, kind of like a thirty year mortgage. When you buy your house, you have a thirty year mortgage on it and you're paying principal and interest. It's really similar, and this is the date that the, um, mortgage or the financing matures.
I like the date, instead of just saying until it's paid off, I think the date's a bit clearer for people to understand.
Yeah, and since we don't have an actual date, like, would be what, December thirty first? Twenty, twenty fifty-two?
At least it's something.
Yeah, that's what I. Counselor Hubbard.
I'm still going to be.
Are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. That looks like she's writing some personal.
Who wants to take a chance at reading?
Sunday, it's your turn.
Just want to give a quick reminder to speak up. I just got a message that they're having a hard time here.
Is there any public comment?
Yeah, is, is there, yeah, is there anybody that has any public comment?
Thank you for that.
Sorry, I don't understand. You're welcome.
Is that yours?
That was your sorry.
It's not, not my sorry. That wasn't mine. That was definitely yours. Now that's, that came from this thought. Have you set up apple?
Yeah, I, really. That was.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry.
It was in like hyperspeed too. I don't think I've ever heard sorry.
It's because that's not my talk. Slow it down.
Nobody's right, so.
All right.
All right, I make a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to add a sunset clause to the public safety fee.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Counsel. Hi. Um, sorry, Counselor Sunday.
Hi.
Um, Counselor Hubbard. Counselor Gunnarson. And I'm an I as well. Yeah. All right, so that takes us on to, um, other business. Does anybody have any other business? I had a couple of things that I would like to see if we can throw over onto the, uh, twentieth, the meeting on the twentieth. Um. Now that I can participate in budget discussions because nine eighty-three passed, um, I have questions that I'm hoping we could maybe dive into with the. Uh, what the budget committee, um, wanted to do for fees on the event and things like that. Um, what does that look like? How do we, how do we interpret that? What does that entail? How do we facilitate that? Do contractors know that? They do. Okay, so if we can have media discussion, John can be possibly keep that on the note for. A follow-up on that, and if it's just Halloween town, if it's just our contractors, what does that look like? And then also, uh, touching base on any type of permits, if there was some stuff that came in, um, permitting and maybe an idea of how permits. To recap, for me, so. If we're. What we actually, if we have an event there, if we're shutting down screens, roads, or. I don't know, we're getting, we're getting them now, like some questions on them, and I think it'd be nice to have a little explanation of. That permitting process and.
For events?
Yeah, and it should be tied, well, the fee should be tied correctly. Should the fees be tied to some type of universal fee schedule that we have, Ashley? Already, something to the sort. Like if we're. Doing some type of fees.
Um. The fee, the fees are generally tied to some sort of regulation, but maybe, um. It'd probably be good for John, you could just provide an update on. What the fees are and.
I've been talking a good way about the. Full surcharge and what that looks like, what's.
And does that include everybody? So does it include, like, I've just included them, or does that include, like, what administrative things or? There's a, I'm getting.
Because I don't know the answers to, just generally, overall.
So agenda item to discuss, just give background about fees and permits.
Yes. And who it pertains to, because I think there's some ambiguity out there that we could hopefully do a better job of. Making sure that we know who it's that's if it doesn't. Um, and then I also want to put on the agenda on people where we're at with any type of HR. Uh, it's been a topic for a while, making sure that we can get some additional help if we can, for a time, help for. Our, uh, city reporter and W B reporter, um, like most of the HR piece, and then also diving back into all of the. Um, evaluations where we're at with that, with city directors. I don't want that to fall back to me. So. Looking, and just an update on that, that'd be great, so there's. Anything, anybody have anything else?
Well, you have to pull it.
You got Dave, there's some good. Given the C O I. I don't know if we can really talk about things.
We can.
Yeah.
Anybody on the agenda for the twentieth?
That's.
About twentieth.
Any other topics to attend to? Counselor Sunday. Counselor Gunnarson. All right, if we don't have anything else, we're going to adjourn this meeting. So it is seven forty-one and the special session is adjourned. Yes.
How many people are online, Kathy?